I call this meeting to order for Thursday, August twenty, I'm sorry, I call this special meeting to order for Thursday, August 28th, 2025. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Susan Payne.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Sharon McDonald.
Here.
Commissioner Crystal Guthrie.
Here.
Commissioner Stephen Burnett is absent. Commissioner Warren Robinson.
Here.
Commissioner Josh Reardon.
Here.
Commissioner Mark Tapley.
Here.
Madam Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Dylan. We are going to begin with the invocation. I had Pastor Soloria down. I do not see him, and I know him well, so I do not believe he's here. So we will begin with the invocation by Warren Robinson and the pledge led by Mayor Pro Tem McDonald. If everybody will stand, please.
If you would join me in a word of prayer. Eternal heavenly Father, look down upon your children and have mercy upon us, and then encourage us to have mercy on others. Lord, listen to our pleas and our cries, then help us listen to the pleas and the cries of others. Lord, give us a clear and kind mind, and then we pray that others will do the same thing with us. We have difficult decisions to make, we have problems to solve, and we can't do it by ourselves. So we ask for your presence, we ask for your grace, and we ask for your mercy. Have mercy upon us, that we may do the same for others and make our community better. This is what we pray in your son's holy name. Amen.
Let me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, we're going to move on to the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? A motion from Mayor Pro Tem McDonald. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Robinson. Can we put up the vote, please? And motion passes six zero. And before we move on to public comment, I did want to mention today I attended a funeral for our municipal court judge's mother, Dina Overstreet. For those of you who knew her, she was an English teacher at the college, and she passed away a few days ago. And then also Pastor Shelby Moon Westminster Presbyterian, an amazing man, passed away this morning, and he left behind his wife and ten children. As a matter of fact, one of his children is one of our police officers. So if you could keep them both in your prayers, please, I would appreciate that. It's been quite an interesting day for sure. And with that, we will move on to public comment. I have Courtney McCary. Is it Squires? I'm sorry. I apologize. Come on up. She's always so sweet. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Courtney McCary Squires, for the record, Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners, and Dr. Hernandez. I'm excited to be here once again. I know you all see me every now and then, me and my brown hat. But I saw on the agenda for tonight's special meeting that there was going to be some conversation and discussion around vacant lots and dilapidated properties. And for those who don't know, I am the community organizer for a local grassroots organization called With Many Hands. Since the end of 2022, we've been working towards creating a economic development opportunity through microfarms throughout Alamo Gordo as well as public gardens in Alamo Gordo and Tularosa as well. And so since I saw that there was going to be some conversation about vacant lots, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't forgotten about, and that everyone was aware that our organization is working towards being a part of the solution to address the issue of some of the vacant lots here in Alamo Gordo. And while we know that the entire solution may not be microfarms, we think that these small changes could be a part of a bigger plan. And so during this past week, just trying to prepare for this meeting, I did take a look at the Local Economic Development Act. And one of the things that I saw in there was some precedent for the city to be able to partner with businesses or entities that facilitate the direct sales of growers of agricultural products, commonly known as farmers markets. And I can officially announce in a public forum that With Many Hands will be taking over the Alamo Gordo Farmers Market in 2026. So that's a great opportunity to increase locally grown food, being able to get out into our community, and for residents to be able to utilize food benefits programs such as WIC, Senior Farmers' Market Nutrition, and also SNAP and Double Up Food Bucks. While looking at the Local Economic Development Act information in the Alamo Gordo Municipal Code, I saw that one of the things that it says that the city has the ability to partake in is the sale or lease of city-owned land or property in return for pledges to provide new jobs of value commensurate with discount from market value granted in any land, property sale or lease. And so as my time is wrapping up, I just wanted to let you all know that going into 2026, we are working towards what we're calling our Urban Farmer Training Program, where we will have paid interns, so job opportunities, job development, to be able to teach residents how to grow food, how to sell at the local farmers market, and how to take part in these state programs. So please don't forget about us. We would like to be part of the solution. Thank you so much for your time, and if you have any questions, I would love to answer them. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And just a reminder, this is public comment. It is not an action item. We cannot have dialogue back and forth while you're up here. I apologize for that. That's not my role. That's somebody else's role. So with that, Brandon Eisenberg?
That's correct.
Did I say that right?
Yes, Eisenberg.
Eisenberg, oh, look at me go. I'm two for two tonight. Okay.
Thank you for having me. Just some short comments. My name is Brandon Eisenberg. I love it here in Alamo Gordo, the community here, friends I've made. Alamo Gordo and Ortero County are bright lights in the world. However, while our city and county shine, we are living in dark times. Our food system is collapsing. Federal money for farmers, for community programs, has completely dried up. Grocery chains are merging with other grocery chains, which end up limiting options and raising prices, making it more difficult to obtain food. A large number of people in this county are experiencing food insecurity, and the numbers are only going to increase. This is why building our local food infrastructure is so important. We need to build our local food system now, and we need all the help we can get. So that's why I'm here in support of With Many Hands and their community gardens. I've been volunteering there. It's been great, the people I've met there, and the community support that's there. I think it should be our commission's number one concern. Thank you.
Thank you. And is it Jasmine? Wait, I'm going to do this. Bratton?
Yeah.
All right.
Hi, I've lived in this, I'm Jasmine Bratton, for the record. I've lived in this community about seventeen years. My dad was in the Air Force, which brought me here. And so, you know, I have two younger kids, one's thirteen, one's nine, and they're in the public school systems. And so I'm also with Many Hands, working as a volunteer to try to get more produce and fresh things to Alamo Gordo. There is a lot of food insecurity here, and I have heard from different people within the community that when they go to the food bank, some of the food is kind of junk food or on the verge of going bad. So I think that being part of With Many Hands, we could provide more produce and healthy options. I think it was year before last, my kids would come home with like fresh fruit and stuff, things that I've, some fruit I've never tried before, and I really thought that was awesome. So I would like for us to be able to provide produce that, you know, we could give to the public schools and, you know, expand the flavor palettes and experience of the students in the school system. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's all I have. We will move on to, we'll go into our work session now. Item one, presentation and discussion on infrastructure as a service for the replacement of water meters. And we have Ryan Mast and/or, and/or, are you Tara?
Tara.
Tara, darn it. I get all the last names right and I mess up the person.
We do it to her all the time. It goes back and forth.
Okay.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Commissioners, I just want to go ahead and introduce you to Ryan and Tara.
Tara, whichever one.
Who are going to be doing the presentation today. This infrastructure as a service is what we spoke about two meetings ago, where we talked about joining the cooperative. And I wanted to have them come and give you guys some good information, let you have a dialogue back and forth, answer some of the questions that are more technical. This is not related to housing. We kind of tacked it onto the meeting so that we could get it going a little bit quicker. This is specifically towards, right now, we're looking out for the water meter replacement project, but it is also something that can be used for other infrastructure projects we have going forward. So Ryan's the expert, and then Tara's going to talk about making sure the efforts that we're doing to make sure we use local contractors and make sure we utilize as many resources as we have available. So I'm going to, with that, give them a clicker and turn it over.
Well, thank you very much, Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners, Dr. Hernandez. It's a real pleasure to be here tonight. My name is Ryan Mast. I'm the state lead for Sustainability Partners for New Mexico. I live in Albuquerque, and I lead our team here throughout the state. I've been with the company now for about three years, as I introduced it to the state of New Mexico. Prior to that, I actually come from a career in public service. So most recent position was the Director of Environmental Health for the City of Albuquerque, and have a long history of working on large-scale sustainable infrastructure and resilience projects here, both in New Mexico as well as throughout the southeast. With me, I have Tara, who can introduce herself real quickly.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners. I'm very happy to be here again and to share with you and to help introduce you to Sustainability Partners. We have done now two phases of work together with the city, working to improve infrastructure. And, you know, I think that this presentation from Sustainability Partners introduces a new opportunity and a way to help fund some of the needs of the city as far as your infrastructure goes. So with that, I'll hand it back over to Ryan.
Thank you, Tara. So I'll go through the presentation, but by all means, feel free to interrupt. And as we go through, if something, a question triggers in your head, otherwise we can address that afterwards and stand for questions. I'll try to keep this as a cursory overview, and certainly willing to always answer any follow-ups that may come up later. So to start off with, Sustainability Partners is a public benefit company. We've been around for about ten years now, and it was really driven and founded by a market need to address infrastructure in a more sustainable manner. So the founders were really meant, trying to address in the infrastructure space, two major key components that they saw a gap in. The primary one is to address the trillion-dollar deferred maintenance issue that we have in public infrastructure across the nation. This goes across to all asset classes, from transportation to buildings to, you know, water and wastewater systems, et cetera. The other thing is, is to help communities overcome the upfront capital burden that was needed to bring technology into the infrastructure space. So if we think about smart water meter systems, if we think about electrification of fleets, when we think about new and modern wastewater systems, advanced water treatment facilities that are needed for advanced manufacturing, those all come at high capital costs and tend to be misaligned with traditional sources of capital, either that are constrained by high debt burdens, communities with high debt burdens, or by limitations on grants and other infrafunds that can go in and complete a full capital stack on a project. And so while we are a newer company, what we're really doing is just connecting capital, creating a modern approach of connecting capital that's interested in investing in essential infrastructure with communities that need essential infrastructure in order to move forward with success within their community. We, as a public benefit company, we only work with public entities or durable entities. We focus on municipalities, schools, hospitals, state agencies, and within that also utilities, anyone that's providing an essential service. Our capital providers that we work with are capital providers that are traditionally investing in the muni bond market or other just public infrastructure projects. So it's just a different way to connect the capital to the projects that are needing those in order to move forward. We call our approach infrastructure as a service, and the differentiator between that is really, it's a new, it's a more flexible and efficient way to move forward with essential infrastructure projects, particularly ones that may be misaligned with traditional sources of capital in moving forward. Either there's a misalignment in the term, or there's a misalignment in the amount of money that's needed in order to move a project forward faster so that a community can actually achieve benefits for it rather than in segments. Some of the key top-line benefits of this approach to differentiate it from other debt financing and other sources of funding that may go into an infrastructure project is, it's really zero upfront cost. So we absorb all the zero, all the costs, really beginning from the design engineering phase all the way up through maintenance, care, and ultimate end-of-life replacement of the infrastructure systems. If you think about construction cycle, we kind of consider ourselves in the design, build, fund, maintain space, but we don't operate it. So the communities that we work with, they operate all the infrastructure as if it was their own. The monthly usage rate, so as we take all that capital and move that, we convert that into a month-to-month usage rate, that is really meant to be aligned with the revenue sources that are generated from that infrastructure or the benefit that the community is driving from that. So if you think about a water meter project, that would be then aligned to what the monthly water rates would be, right? So we're going to be using on like a per meter, per basis, per month basis. We do a lot of work in the electric vehicle space, so we charge an availability plus a mileage, right? So it's based upon what is practically being used from that infrastructure that we're investing in. Because we are accounting for all of the design up through the maintenance component to that, there's a real efficiency in project delivery. And so what systems or what projects can sometimes take six months to a year to move forward, we can usually do in a matter of months to get them started. And then the, one of the key benefits to the way that we've structured this is, per accounting standards, we're actually considered a non-debt structure. So it doesn't affect bond, your credit rating, it doesn't affect your bonding capacity, et cetera. It's really meant to be a way to turn a capital expenditure into an operating expenditure for the communities. One of the things in my background is I'm an emergency manager by trading, and so I was always working on trying to figure out how in the infrastructure space we can mitigate risk. That's really how we approach a lot of our projects, from a concept and a design perspective. So there's really four key areas where we think we're mitigating a lot of risk for communities, particularly around essential projects that they need to move forward. Primarily and first and foremost, it's on the capital side. So we can actually be flexible to combine infrafunds, capital investment, along with any other, if there are any other incentives or grants that may be needed to move a project forward, just to ensure that you have a completed capital stack, so that you can, in an efficiency of project delivery, actually achieve cost effectiveness within it. Essentially, what we're trying to do is ensure that the bucket gets fully filled, so that you can move it forward, so you don't have a half-completed project. We also work to collaborate on system design. So when we're, when you convert something to an as-a-service type of approach, we're really looking at the total ownership cost of that project over its useful life. So that includes not just the first-out cost, but also the maintenance cost over time, and what would a replacement schedule look like at the end. And when you do that, you create much different math from what you might go for. So rather than trying to seek the lowest cost, first-out cost, which may have a short useful life and require a lot of maintenance, you're actually spending a lot more money over the life, we're actually trying to build the best from the start and reduce maintenance costs and ownership costs over time. And when we do that, you actually can create a lot of efficiencies for the communities. On the construction side, we absorb all that risk, so we carry all the cost all the way up until that asset is actually performing for you as a community. So that means that there's no actual payment back to us until you're actually achieving the benefit from the infrastructure. And then ongoing maintenance and care, we're actually responsible for that. So essentially, if there's a non-performing asset that we move forward with, you don't have to pay for that until we get it repaired for you. So it's really converting that into a service that is focused merely on the usage. As I mentioned, you know, at its core, we're a capital provider or a funding source, so we can connect to a wide variety of different asset classes. But we really focus on those that have that high capital burden or are misaligned with other traditional. So some of our key asset classes that we invest in, some of the major ones is water meters nationwide. That's our number-one asset class. In New Mexico, that's also the one that we have the most projects to go for at this point. We do a lot of work in the renewable space and microgrids, electrification, and rolling stock, as well as water wastewater systems, those that have a lot of maintenance requirements over time, and also have that high upfront burden in order to achieve that technology. In New Mexico, we've now completed several different water meter projects throughout the state. I think the closest, relatively speaking, is probably the City of Jal. I know that's still quite a far ways away from here, but we have active projects under construction for water meters in several modes that are at various stages of contracting. We currently have a project in design with the City of Albuquerque for a behind-the-meter solar project. We're actually working with Tara's team on the design build for that project. And then most recently, we've been awarded a statewide price agreement to help support fleet electrification statewide. So we're working with various different state agencies, as well as counties and municipalities, to help them move forward with their fleet transition. I know Evelyn mentioned before that one of the projects that the city here is principally interested in is metering. And so if you think of infrastructure as a service, metering as a service is very much aligned with that. And it really is, we consider the first step in healing a water system, right? Because the water meter is actually the way that's your brain and your cash register for your entire system. So if it's running inefficiently, you don't have the data you need in order to identify and prioritize other fixes, and you also don't have the revenue, because you're losing a lot of revenue, both in inaccurate reads, but also in just the inefficiencies of being able to address like low-flow technology, extra operational costs that are needed in order to repair essentially an end-of-life system. So for metering as a service, you know, we have complete turnkey deployment of an AMI system or any system that's needed. It includes maintenance and training for the staff. We integrate with the billing staff to understand the benefits of it. We really like to work with advanced metering that includes acoustic leak detection, that helps communities identify where their leaks are occurring. You can prioritize them based off the size and severity of them. And then, you know, again, what we see with these projects is there's an immediate cash flow and return on the investment, because if there's no payment back to us until that meter is in the ground and actually helping you achieve greater revenue. So it's really a pay-as-you-go or pay-as-you-save type of model, because our usage is based off of performing meters. So you're never going to have a non-performing meter moving forward, because we're going to be responsible for ensuring it's performing for you. There's no changes. We're cost-plus. We don't mark up any goods or services. We work with our vendor partners to identify what the best solution is for the city. We don't mark that up. We're very transparent about all the costs that are in it, and it's collaborative process with the city to understand exactly what their needs are. And if there's other things that are associated with the system that are, makes sense to happen at that same time, so you need meter cans replaced because a certain number of those were broke, or you need a different meter lids, whatever that might be associated with it, we can fold that into the scope, just so that you make sure you have, you're maximizing the efficiency of your system. The key to meter as a service is really being able to do the entire system at one time, so that every, it creates sort of a fair deployment of that across the city. Everyone has the updated system. Everyone is getting the accurate rates. Your ratepayers, your citizens are actually being able to see also accurately what their uses are, and there's a portal for them to understand their usage, to give themselves leak alarms. So it really is a great way, especially in areas that are water-constrained, to educate citizens on water conservation measures, to also both reduce their bill, but advance and help shore up your water system. And then finally, we don't ever, it's a set monthly fee over time. There's no changes without any prior approval. So this really is a partnership moving forward related to this. So that's why meters has become such a big asset class for us, because even when we're talking with water utilities about other improvements that we need, we always start with the meters. Let's make sure that that's fixed, make sure your data is correct, make sure your revenue streams are straight, because then from there, you can use that to then do better asset management downstream. I did want to provide, you know, here's a case study, at least on one project that has been completed now for a few years out in Roosevelt County. They've seen significant impact since working with us. Not only have they been able to educate their citizens on their water use, identify their leaks, and improve their operational costs, so they've lowered their operational costs. They actually purchased their water from the City of Portales, and year-on-year, with all of these things combined, they've been able to reduce their water costs, their water purchasing, up to thirty percent year-on-year, which has helped them tremendously, because whereas a few years ago, they were actually figuring out, trying to figure out where they were going to be able to purchase additional water rights to supplant, to supplement the water system, now they actually have achieved a little bit more balance, because they have greater water conservation with the advanced metering. So I did want to allow Tara the opportunity to talk a little bit about how we contract, because we're vendor-agnostic, and so we're always working to achieve greater value in all of our projects, to keep as much as we can of those dollars turning over local with local vendors.
Thank you. Yeah. I just prepared one slide. You know, we want to continue to be, oh, I guess my slide isn't loaded. But we want to continue to be a good partner to the city. We have really enjoyed working with you all over the past, you know, year and a half, two years that we've been in the community. But we have heard the feedback, and we're taking it seriously, and we want to grow in our efforts to engage with Alamo Gordo's workforce. So on previous water meter projects that we've done, these are some of the ways that we've identified to engage with community contractors. So the initial thoughts that came to our mind were with the communications network and electrical pipe and wire. You know, with that, we can create an opportunity for local electricians to respond. On the large meter replacements, which will be more time-consuming and, you know, kind of one-off situations, that's a good opportunity for some local plumbers to be engaged. And then also, in other communities, we've actually hired individual tradespeople, so plumbers, electricians, who, you know, are in the skilled trades, and brought them into the team to engage in those activities as well. And as we work together with the team here and Sustainability Partners to define the scope of the project, we'll continue to reflect and try to identify more of those opportunities. So I just want So I just wanted to make sure that I shared that with you, that you knew that we had heard the feedback and we took it seriously and we're taking it to heart. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I think with that, we'll stand for questions, if you have any now.
Anybody have questions?
Quick one. This one's kind of not water related, but on your one slide here, you got your different things that you do, and you got a tab that says rolling stock on here. Does that include like cop cars? It's talked about buses and, and field depots, stuff like that, but does that include like fleet of cop cars or fire trucks or anything along those lines?
Madam, Mayor Commissioner, yes, it does. And, and so, you know, we're really, you know, really flexible tool, because we're, we're trying to connect to that. But we actually do have and have funded public safety vehicles and police vehicles. We've got a contract similar that we have in New Mexico, in Hawaii, that we've had for five years, and we've been supporting them with hybrid public safety vehicles as well, and those are fully outfitted to their spec that they need.
Do they have to be hybrid, or can they just be?
So, that's a great question, Madam, Mayor Commissioner. So for that, for them, they do, because they're working under a state contract to provide either hybrid or fully electric, because they're going through a fleet transition for electrification. For us here in New Mexico under the statewide price agreement, that's also targeting either zero emission vehicles or hybrid vehicles. But our services can be applied to any. We're agnostic when it comes to that. So if, if, if it's something that is desired, we can find a different procurement vehicle wherein we can procure then other rolling stock as well.
Okay. Cool. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
Oh, I, I did. I had a question, and it's more for you and the city. We've been seeing how everything is, is rolling out for the city, and I think on Tuesday night, we were talking about water and just a schedule of how we want to make sure everything is in line. So how does the meter situation line up with what we're looking at? Because we do have a delay coming up in one of the, the pieces of the puzzle. So I just wanted to know, how does this line up with, you know, the overall infrastructure of everything?
So when we initially brought the water rates to you, the water meter replacement plan was in that initial water rate study. So this is just a one-way, in that I think we were discussing on how we were going to fund it. We didn't, we haven't put it out for part of the loan or anything like that, but it was, is it going to be cash funded? Were we going to put like a million dollars away, way and do so many every month? But it was included in the initial study for the, the water rates. Did that answer your question?
It, it does in part, but the meters would be before we finish the infrastructure?
It's, it's part of the whole program, so we have, if you recall, it's $160 million worth of infrastructure, and the first piece is this loan, that, the 20-ish thousand loan, I think, that we're doing right now is the first piece of that 160,000. So this is just an additional piece on top of that.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Anybody else?
How long would it take, just ballpark, to replace the water meters in Alamo Gordo? Months, year, year and a half?
Madam, Mayor, Mr. Commissioner, I believe we're looking, do we have, what's the meter count here, is around 13,000?
13,000-ish.
13,000. So, you know, we would work with our contractors to identify and with the city to understand, like what, how long would you like it to take, right? Because there's always a way to scale, to get additional installers in, to be able to do that. We've done projects where we've, we've been able to do, you know, 35,000 meters in a couple of years, right? There's sometimes a benefit to going faster, and then there's sometimes drawbacks to going faster. I would say though, on average, for something like this, considering the, the climate here allows you to work 12 months out of the year, a 12-month construction schedule would be very reasonable.
Thank you.
Good. Go ahead.
Well, I happen to know a thing or two about broken water meters, so I for one am glad to see that we're keeping up on it this time. Anyway, alrighty. Well, if nobody has anything else, thank you.
Thank you for your time. I do have some, some leave behind material for you, if you'd like to, to review that. And of course, via the city, I'm available anytime. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. We're going to move on to item two, discussion on city housing initiatives, limitations and opportunities.
Everybody's staring at me, so I guess.
Well, that's because your name is at the end of it, so.
So the reason this was all brought up was basically because of the Patriot Point Apartments' discussion, and what we are able or not able to do is for, what are our limitations on initiatives to get builders in here? What can we provide them? What can we not provide them? Because it seemed to be a lot of setback into things we can't do. So I just wanted some education on what we can do, what options do we have, or do we not have any? Are we stuck in just saying no? Because I hear about a lot of bringing stuff in and building and having new builders and this, and how do we incentivize them to come, but then it doesn't feel like we have any right to incentivize. So I just want to open up the discussion about how do we incentivize people? What do we have available to do for them?
You're on.
So I, how do you want to start this conversation? Do you want to start specifically with Patriot Point or everything?
We don't have to do that specifically, just in general. What, I know that you guys talked about different things that we've done in the past. I think you, what was it, GRIP? GRIP? Whether it worked or not, I don't know, whether it can be adjusted to work, or, or is it our ordinances that are in the way? Where, you know, what can we, what can we do to incentivize? Where are our limitations?
So the answer is, we can always do something. You're the governing body, so it's never just a no. We can talk about GRIP. I'll go ahead and let Daryl start off the conversation, because of where we kind of left off at the last one, on some of the incentives.
Okay.
So the number one incentive that has been brought before the city, it's been around Patriot Point, but one that is seen throughout New Mexico is a metropolitan redevelopment area or an MRA. That has been a plan that has been spearheaded by the county, looking to work with the city in declaring certain areas. A part of the, declaring certain areas known, known as blight, a blighted area, meaning that they're struggling. The definition for a blighted area is pretty long. There's many different, oh, there's many different requirements or eligible things that can go into it, whether it be completely rundown, economic struggles, dilapidated, like areas of dilapidation. And then based off of a resolution from the commission, declaring an area a blighted area, it does then allow for some of the big, is that just me hearing a big echo? Okay. I'll try and talk away. But, so some of the, the benefits to it is that companies can receive state funds, get some certain tax abatements for around seven years. There's some fairly significant benefits to it.
Now I can't hear you, sorry. It's a no-win situation.
I know. So there, there are definite pros to designating an area a blighted area and then developing a, a redevelopment plan. There are some definite legal challenges to that. Specifically, the smaller the area, the, the city has to have proof and be able to designate and show how the area is blighted, how the area is struggling, what can't be done, like how's it, if we're going to go with like economic development, how is it being economically challenged? We have to be able to prove that. And, so that's, there, there, there's some pros and cons to that specific route. I know that first and foremost, Patriot Point, that's been the number one push, because it does offer, it does offer substantial benefits to developers seeking, especially with kind of where we're at in the economy, needing that extra push. However, that does also come with some, some legal challenges and also consequences as well, if we, if we go too quickly into looking at some of these different, if we don't do it correctly, I should say. And I know, I know the county has been very proactive in trying to push for a redevelopment area. It's being used very widely in Albuquerque. I have, was trying to get ahold of the Las Cruces city attorney. They just recently did four redevelopment plans in Las Cruces earlier this year. So it is, it is starting to be used. I do believe also Los, maybe Los Alamos County is also doing some, Gallup has done some. So I mean, it's, it's being utilized, and, and that's, again, been, this, this option has been kind of the first and foremost and the front runner of, of things that we can do, but there are challenges to it. We do have to go through certain requirements if the commission is wanting to kind of go down this route. You know, we have to have it for public posting and, and, and kind of the public notice requirements for the Open Meetings Act. But again, when we're, when we're talking about development, most places are doing these, these, these blighted areas in very, they're significant sections, they're not just a single, the smaller we make a area blight, the harder the proof is to show, okay, well, why is this single parcel a blighted area but not across the street? Or why is not the entire neighborhood considered a blighted area? Which, again, that can, can all be proven, it's just we, we have to make sure that we can, because one of the things is if, while, I don't know, a concern the commission brought when we first brought this up, and sorry, I'm kind of back and forth, was property values. The term blight is not a fun word. It just, it sounds bad. It gives a bad connotation. However, there has been no evidence as far as property values, that it has decreased property values. So I know that was a concern of the commission. So far, everything that I've researched and talked with other attorneys, I've been in contact with the Otero County Attorney, as well as the, the self-insurers fund, the municipal league. We have a monthly meeting where all the city attorneys get together and we, it's usually a therapy session, but, but several of the cities that are doing that, they have not seen property values decrease. However, that is all then, the actual property value, like is from the county assessor. However, that can, I mean, it's, it, some, many of you have sold properties before, if the, the term, like, why, why is my house a blighted house? Like, that may in itself drive people away from, it's a public perception issue, not necessarily an actual property value issue. So that, that's something to consider as well, especially when we're looking at the size of what area we're going to deem a blight, and then just how are we able to prove that it is a blighted area? Because if, if a citizen is in that area or is near that area, doesn't like it, they can challenge it in district court, and if they do, and if we're not able to prove it, then that goes away. It gets reversed. And so then we were then kind of stuck with a developer now who, you know, was making plans and given assurances for having this benefit, and then all of a sudden, it's been taken away. So that's just something to keep in mind if we look at the Metropolitan Redevelopment Act and, and making one of those plans. Trying to think as far as the MRA, because that's, that's one that's, it's starting, it's on the rise in New Mexico of cities starting to use it. It used to be just Albuquerque that only had it, but again, like I said, Las Cruces just did it. They made four, they're called MRAs, but they just made four MRAs areas in there, so it is starting to be used. So that is definitely something, along with some of the stuff Stephanie mentioned, like GRIP or different tax credits that, that the city can do. I'd be happy to kind of answer, there, there's a lot to it, so I'd be happy to answer specific questions, or I can just kind of keep generally talking about.
Got a quick question on that. You said Albuquerque and Las Cruces, and then you said like Los Alamos. Could we reach out to their communities and, and maybe get photographs of the areas that they're declaring as blighted?
Absolutely. So I, I do.
You know what I mean, as a comparison to what we're trying to look at versus what they're doing, to see, and then, and maybe reach out to their attorneys and see how they're getting around the challenges?
Absolutely. And, and so like, for example, and it was Los Alamos, like, it looks like the Los Alamos one, I have, I have the map right here of what's been declared. I mean, it's, it's like a four-square block area. The.
Is it vacant land, or is it dilapidated structures?
Mostly dilapidated structures and, and like loss of business, like so that, you know, you get to like a food desert or, you know, a food place, so there's no place for groceries, there's no any type of business at all. Let's see, there's the, I'm just pulling up the.
You said Cruces just did four of them?
Correct. They just, yeah, they believe on, in March of, yeah, in March of this year, they announced four new areas. I'm seeing if I have the map for you. I mean, you can't show it, but, but yeah, no, absolutely. And, and that's generally what needs to happen, at least from what I have seen, is that the city would then, you know, find a proposed area, a designated area that, that we feel needs the economic development, that needs the help of, you know, outside funds. And then we would kind of go check, see, okay, do an accounting, basically, okay? How many people, like, how many vacant homes are here? How many businesses are out there? Like, what, what do they have? So then that way, we just have that record, so should anybody say like, hey, this isn't a blighted area, we can be like, actually, court, yes, it is, and this is why. But no, we can absolutely get with them to, to get pictures and just descriptions.
Could we look at it as well, like, that area has never been developed, and I don't know how old that part of the city is, probably seventies, maybe early eighties over in that area. That area will never develop unless we do something similar to this, so, I mean, is, is, would that, will a situation such as that fit into the blighted category?
Yeah, so, you, I, the, what's, which specific area, like the?
Well, like, we'll, we'll just use Patriot Point as, as an example. I mean, a developer's not going to go in there and buy that to build single-family homes. I mean, it's, it's going to be more of a, of an apartment complex type deal.
Right.
If they're willing to take that large of an investment into our community.
Right. So with, with, with defining what a blighted area is, I mean, the definition, it is, it's vast. I mean, anything from substantial number of deteriorated structures, predominance of inadequate street layout, faulty lot planning, anything from defective or unusual conditions of title, improper subdivisions, adequate housing facilities, anything like that. So I mean, especially when we're talking about vacant land, I mean, that's starting to get to inadequate housing or something like that, where it's just empty, just empty. So there's definitely, the, the definition of it is, is very vast and can encompass a lot of the problems that cities and even rural cities like Alamo Gordo face. So that, that is something that, that can address those things, it's just we got, we just have to make sure that we're able to, to back it up. And that's, that tends to be the biggest struggle.
In terms of Patriot Point, though, where it's located, and because it's already been purchased, is, how does that even correlate with it being deemed blight, or is even a possibility since it has been purchased now already? Because I don't know if that's even something that could be considered in this situation specific.
So, so it would be one that is definitely a, I, I personally feel would be a struggle.
Right.
If, I mean, I think it'd be easily challenged. There's many houses nearby.
There's, and there's apartments. I mean, not just, I'm not talking about just Las Ventanas, but right there off of Moon Glow, there is several duplexes and.
So it's not really an option for the area that, that specific area?
So again, I was going to say, and depending on the size, depending on what, if, if that's a way the commission wants to go, then, you know, we, we would look at that to see if it's even viable, to see if we can prove it. Because again, a, a single challenge, we'd have to be able to back it up at district court. If some, if any citizen feels that they don't want that there, they would be able to challenge it. And so we would have to then back it up. And then, again, any reliance that the developer has, then it's not just hurting the city as far as public image and public trust, that now a developer's definitely not going to be happy. So it's, I mean, I wouldn't be happy, but.
Could we structure it also, you know, once, if we were to do that, and they do build the development, it is going to increase the property values in that area due to the development? So is there any way to structure the, the? So is there any way to structure the, however we determine it's blighted? Because once we, we, we determine, if we do go and say it's blighted and they build that, then we rescind the, the resolution and pull it out after it's built, correct?
So I, I will have to confirm, but I do believe that once an area's been designated a blight, it will have to stay blighted, I believe, for, I think, seven years. Which is, which is what they get, like, for the tax abatement and as they're receiving the benefits of the plan and the being a development plan, then it's got to be blighted. And as soon as that's done, then yes, the, the, by resolution, the commission could then say, this area is no longer blighted, and it'd be fixed.
So if you've got to keep it for seven years, then what's the, I mean, I understand the intent of declaring it blighted so you can re, you know, redevelop it, but I would think it'd be a shorter term, say, hey, they get it built, and then we rescind it a year later or two years later?
I, and I'll be perfectly honest, this is all-
So we did speak with Chris, and so what happens is it's the year of the development and six years subsequent. And so you can only do it up to seven years. The commission has the ability to do it only for, do the resolution for five years, three years, one year. Like, you do have that ability to do that, but it's an, but after seven years, they're no longer, the tax credit is no longer available to them.
Okay, so I, I have a couple of question, unless, okay.
I have one, too.
I, I have a couple of questions real quick, I'm sorry. So the first one is, if we do this, if we do it for seven years, and Mr. Valencia builds the apartments and sells them after a year, does that tax credit forward on to the new owner?
Yeah, it, it follows the area.
So it, it could potentially, for him, be an incentive to be able to sell it?
The, the purpose of the, the plan, I mean, if we're going to be very specific, yes, it, it would be an incentive for him, but it's an incentive for all developers.
Okay, so then that was my next question, so, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to cut you off, but we, and I don't know why nobody's talking about this, but we have apartments going up right now in Mesa Verde, right? Cindora? Cindora. From what I read today, it's quite a few units. I understand that they're geared towards the military, but the, the narrative that has been put out there is if we don't do this and he doesn't build apartments, we could lose Holloman. That was sort of the suggestion. So clearly, that is the thought, is Holloman. So, so these apartments in Mesa Verde are geared towards Holloman Airmen. There is no way we could declare anything at Mesa, the Mesa Verde area blight. So we could never justify that. So the people that are building, Cam, Brenner?
Technically, technically, I think Mesa, it actually qualifies more over there because there is more, it's need for housing on the north side of town, as opposed dead center when they're, it's fully developed.
Right, but come on, in good con-
It's not, but by definition, I agree.
I get it.
I'm saying by the definitions that we're using for Patriot Point, you could use those same definitions for-
Yeah, I'm sorry, but I have to sleep at night. So for me, that would not be blight. But, but let's say, let's just say that, that we couldn't technically call that blight, then they would not be able to apply for that same incentive. So, okay, right? Am I right?
Correct, yeah. If, if, if it doesn't meet the definition of blight, Oregon is challenged in, in a court, the district court decides that, no, it does not meet that threshold, then that would, that benefit would be removed.
Okay, so then, I'm sorry, one more question. Maybe. Well, I'll let you talk, and then I might have more. I don't know, we'll see. Okay. How much money, does anybody, and I haven't looked specifically at this, but the difference between the property taxes now on basically dirt versus the property taxes once the project is complete, how much money are we talking about?
So, and RB answered that, I saw their county meeting, I wanted to say it was like forty thousand estimate? It's, currently, it's eighteen thousand. Okay.
A hundred and something thousand a year?
Once it's developed, a hundred and twenty thousand a year. Is that what you're saying?
A year. So that would be almost-
Do you want to come up, RB, and just speak, please?
Yeah, and-
For the record, so that they can hear you.
Just specific to that question?
Ask the mayor.
Huh? So, RB Nichols, Otero County Attorney, for the record. So that specific question, Madam Mayor, is, currently, it's around eighteen thousand. Once it's developed, based on the current valuation of the development, it would be around a hundred, a hundred and twenty thousand a year. So over the course of seven years, we're talking seven, eight hundred thousand dollars.
They're paying eighteen thousand a year?
That would be abated.
Currently, they're paying eighteen thousand a year on that vacant land? Or is that the-
No, excuse me, eighteen, eighteen hundred.
Eighteen hundred?
Yes, yes.
So it's really closer to about eight hundred thousand?
Yes.
At a hundred and twenty thousand a year. So that's eight hundred thousand dollars that we would be waiving. My, my biggest, my biggest concern with, well, besides the fact that I don't think that area is blight, and I, I will stand by that, I think that is misleading at best. But besides that, my concern is, I genuinely believe that he's going to turn around and sell these apartments. He's done it with every other property he's had in New Mexico. I do not believe this is going to be any different.
Got a quick question on that. Honestly, why does that come into play?
Because he's going to sell it, and then the new owner is going to get that tax break, and our taxpayers are on the hook for it.
We still get the benefit of the, of the investment in the community. We still get a twenty-two million dollar investment in our community.
Okay.
I just, I was-
I'm just telling you how I feel. This is just how I feel.
I mean, I understand where you're coming from, because he's getting a tax abatement, and he's going to use it as part of a, a, a package to sell the facility. But on the other side of that, in seven years, we're going to get, you know, we're going to get the infrastructure, the water meters, we're going to get all that income, and then in seven years, we're going to start generating that additional tax revenue. And then-
So if we do-
That hundred and twenty thousand, is that our part and y'all's part? Or is that just the city's part?
That's the total.
That's the total. So it's not going to be near as, I mean, because that'll be split, I don't know what the percentages are, but on the city's side of it, how much would it really-
I think we have about a little less than ten percent, four point something and five point zero, so.
Of, of the hundred and, you said a hundred and eighty thousand or a hundred and twenty thousand?
Hundred and twenty, yeah.
So we'd have ten percent of that, so it'd really only be eighteen thousand a year coming to us, right?
So of the hundred and twenty thousand, we have ten percent of that?
A hundred and twenty thousand, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Twelve thousand. So over a seven-year period, then we're only going to be, what, eighty, eighty-four thou, or eight hundred and forty thousand?
Seventy-two.
It'd be eighty-four thousand dollars.
Yeah, eighty-four, eighty-four.
It'd be eighty-four thousand over seven years.
Do we know what the county, has the county made a decision on, on anything pertaining to this specific?
The county's last meeting, we, we passed a, a resolution declaring intent to pursue that.
I think the, the, the biggest thing is if we could get the pictures of what other communities are declaring as blight. If it looks similar to what we have, then I think maybe we could make it work. But if it's, you know, way down there in the old, old parts of Las Cruces, where there's a bunch of rundown buildings, then, you know what I mean? But if they have an area where it's just vacant land and they're declaring that as blighted, then, then I think we could try to make it fit.
Well, and just to clarify, it can, although he's already purchased and established a plan and done all the things he's done, it, it's not too late to declare it if that were the case, or is it too late? I did not ask that question.
I was gonna say, I did not look into that one.
I think that's something we need to clarify before we can even consider-
Commissioner McDonald, I'm sorry, Mayor Proctor McDonald had a question.
I, I did. Because I represent District Number Five. When I see, and I'm not saying that I'm against the apartments, so I'll just put that out there up front, but we have been living with the fact that we have not had any development in that area in probably twenty to thirty years. And so sometimes I just wonder, with a situation like this, when we want to call blight, where, you know, there's nothing on it, it's just bare land, and then we overlook the fact that, you know, we have most of District Number Five even going out to Walker because it extends out there. I, I think right now, I just have a, a little bit of heartburn with that, because I, I, I know we want the apartments, and I know we need them, but when we start talking blight, I, I just wonder, I said, how are you able to declare blight where you have decent housing, you have a piece of land, five point, is it either five point nine five or five point six five? And we have more territory in District Number Five that needs addressing. And like I said, it has not been anything in over, I, I'm going to say twenty-five to thirty years, for sure. And when we start addressing or putting so much attention on one area that's not blighted, I just wonder, how do you come to terms with using that blighted area over there on Sun Glow as opposed to the entire District Five? I said, because there's-
It's Moon Glow, just so we're clear, sorry.
Did I say Sun Glow?
Yeah.
Okay, well, Moon Glow-
I don't want everybody to get the wrong-
Okay, well, anyway, I, I, I just think right now, when we start talking about blight, how are you going to justify that five point six five or nine five acres of land to an entire district that is suffering from just no development at all?
So we can declare any area, that's the governing bodies. And when we were looking into this, of course, Walker Town came up as an area, a potential area, Chihuahua, with the, an area, Commissioner Raridens, or maybe Commissioner Burnett's areas. There's not a limit on how many areas you can call blight. We can call this and six other areas. It's just like Daryl says, we have to, it has to be justifiable if challenged. So taking it back to the big picture, there's a lot of things for infill. I guess we need to distinguish between affordable housing and market-based, because affordable housing, the state allows us to do a lot more things by donating land. Affordable Housing Act allows us to even waive fees, infrastructure needs that the city can partner with, like, but that has to be an affordable housing. So I know that Mr. Valencia was asking for some of that in his, in this, in his project. It's not affordable, it's market-based. So I, you know, we, when we're talking about housing, we're talking to housing as a whole. I know we're paring down to this, but this, this Development Act is a possibility in our city. It just is, how does the commission want to utilize it?
Could, could we look at, you know, I don't want to pick on Commissioner McDonald's district, but she's correct, there is a lot of that. And, you know, you said Cruces did four of these all at one time. So maybe that's the answer, is, is do this piece, and then the Walker area and, and that other area, all at the same time. We do it, do it as a package.
That is possible.
So that we can try to start getting some of these. And, and we actually, I don't know if y'all know this, but we actually have a Affordable Housing Ordinance on our books. I've never read it, but we have one. And, you know, maybe it's got something in there that would allow us to do some of this.
So that's for affordable housing. Twelve ordinance, twelve ninety, twelve ninety-six is for our Affordable Housing Ordinance.
Twelve forty-six, yeah.
Yeah, so. And then so just another big picture, because we're paring it down to just Patriot Point, I just want everybody to keep in mind, we have about eight hundred lots that can be sold. Somerset has over three hundred, Bella Vista has thirty-four, Granada Hills has thirty, Mesa Village, this first, the first phase has eighty. Of course, we know there's more phases coming. Canyon Park, Hermosillo Del Sol, Liberty Village, the Cindora Apartments, Patriot Point, and Quail Hollow, those are all of our housing developments. Now, we have Patriot Point with a hundred and fourteen, and then we have the Cindora Apartments. They told me they're going to house five hundred and twenty-eight people.
I think we're done, if you want me.
So-
Oh, if you wanted to say something.
I would like to.
I would like to hear it.
Go ahead.
All right. So I'm going to start with big picture, like, just basics, we have a supply and demand issue. There's not enough housing for the demand, so housing is expensive, it's unaffordable across the board. So we, to address that, we, we don't want to just address these market rate, this Patriot Point development, we don't just want to address low-income housing. It needs to be across the board, because the needs are all across the board. But right now, because there's not enough, places are matching their rate based on the military housing allowance, and that is not affordable for a lot of our residents that are not military. But we need to be providing housing that is going to be meeting the military demands, the needs of professionals, our traveling doctors, nurses that are coming here, and then separately, low income, we can address it all at the same. It's not mutually exclusive. So I, I understand your point and your point, they're valid, and we need to address those. And I think first, the, the term blight, it's, the legislature should have used a different term, like undeveloped or something. Because this is, so, I'll read the common definition of blight. A thing that spoils or damages something. Ugly, neglected, or rundown condition of an urban area. So contrast that with the legislative meaning, which is an area of city, and so with that, an area of a city with insufficient housing to meet the demand or need can be considered blight, blighted in certain legal and policy contexts, even if the existing buildings and houses are not in significant disrepair. This determination depends on the jurisdiction's definition of blight, which often extends beyond the physical deterioration to include non-physical factors such as overcrowding, underutilization of land, economic stagnation, or social and economic liabilities that hinder public welfare. Traditional definitions of blight rooted in the early twentieth-century urban renewal efforts focused on physical issues like dilapidated structures, unsanitary conditions, or threats to health and safety. However, many state statutes and policy frameworks have broadened the term to encompass systemic issues. For instance, underutilization or improper utilization of land. Some definitions allow for blight designation based on land not being used to its full potential, such as areas with low-density development amid, amid high housing demand. Legal and policy analysis note that this can include facility obsolescence, economic use of land, or stagnant and unproductive conditions, enabling redevelopment even in areas with well-maintained, underbuilt properties. So for example, historical studies have incorporated overcrowding and economic stagnation as blight indicators, separate from physical decay. Economic or social stagnation, broader interpretations link blight to disinvestment, unemployment, stalled growth, or social issues like increased crime, which can stem from unmet housing needs with, without physical disrepair. So then, let's go to the definition in New Mexico. And first, three dash sixty-eight dash forty-eight is liberal interpretation that the Metropolitan Redevelopment Code shall be liberally construed to carry out its purposes. Its purpose is redevelopment and investment in communities, leading to growth and rising tides that bring everyone up, that improve the conditions for everyone. So for our blighted definition under this, and I'm just going to read the relevant parts, an area that substantially impairs or arrests the sound growth and economic health and well-being within a jurisdiction of a local government or locale within the jurisdiction of a local government because of lack of adequate housing facilities in the area, obsolete or impractical planning and plating, or an area where significant number of commercial or mercantile businesses have closed, or significantly reduced their operations due to economic losses, loss of profit due to operating in the area, low levels of commercial or industrial activity, or redevelopment, or any combination of such factors, or an area retards the provisions of housing accommodations, or constitutes an economic or social burden, and is a menace to public health, safety, and morals and welfare in its present condition and use. That is very broad, and it, it hits us on, like, what is our poverty rate? It's, it's three times the national average. There's, we have, we're losing investment and money every day when military service members are choosing to live in Las Cruces instead of here. We, if we have housing here, and that's attracting them, giving them a nice place to live, it's also going to bring in business and investment, that's going to provide jobs, and separately, we attack low-income housing and take advantage of those. It's got to be a- It's gotta be a multi-pronged approach, and um, we gotta think big and use our imagination and be creative. We, we have the data to support um, any challenge. I've been working closely with Module Spurling, who you are also contracted with. They specialize in bonding and, and these types of things, they've done this in Albuquerque. They've looked at this with me, they're confident this applies, they're confident that even Mesa Village and the development out there could apply for this. So, you know, we need to incentivize people to come here and develop.
Well, I was just gonna say, we've always had that issue. We've always had, um, for the last thirty years, we've always had um, Holloman. And they have always had people come into town. And a lot of people choose to live in Las Cruces, and even drive from El Paso here because there's more to Las Cruces and, uh, you know, El Paso as far as education, opportunities, and housing. They have a certain way, they, they want to have housing and the educational part too. So, I'm not looking at just District Five. I'm looking at the fact that thirty years has gone by, and it's almost like we didn't have a strategy going. And now, we're trying to do something now, and I still think it, it should be a strategy. And when I, as a commissioner, people always come and they're always talking about low-income housing. And I said, we have um, the, well, we have public housing in that area. And it usually seems as though that's where that area wants to be, you know? We wanna fill up, um, you know, a couple of districts, and I'm not gonna say just District Five, with low-income housing, when we have such a rich um, heritage of, uh, you know, our, you know, the um, Mexican America. And you know, we have a lot of Spanish housing that has um, a great opportunity to be showcased. Instead of, you know, just building, you know, houses just to be building them. So, I, I think I'm in, I'm in, um, you know, I'd, I'd like to say I'm in agreement with the fact that, you know, we need housing. But I also think that we need a strategy now. And it's not just saying, okay, we, we need to do this for this group, or we need to do it for that group. And I think we've lacked that um, strategy. Because when I look at, uh, and I see the fact that we're building around the city, and they said we're out of land, and uh, we have a perfect opportunity in some of the areas to create something that is a little bit better than what we have right now. And I, I think that's where I have um, a real issue with. Because I, I, you know, I said, I've looked at some of the housing. When you go to um, District Two and Five, I'm not so much in all of the other districts. But I, we have more houses that are, you know, they show the culture of our area. As opposed to, you know, and I'm just saying, some of the other um, areas where everything is pretty much the same. You have um, you know, a suburb here, and when you look at the houses, they're all the same. You know, it's either a ranch or, you know, two-story. And I think we should take advantage of what we have, and not be like everybody else, but show that there's a difference, and we do have uh, things that we wanna offer and showcase and maintain. And right now, like I said, I'm, I'll just say it out front, I said, I'm against, um, you know, saturating Districts Two, Five, and I think uh, Four with low-income housing. I said, I think it needs to be built up because of the tax base that we have. We want to have something that uh, creates wealth, and not only wealth in the city, but you know, just uh, the ability to grow our, um, you know, our city structure so that we do have money to accommodate a swimming pool. So, we do have uh, you know, money to, you know, to keep our roads and our fire department and our policemen. So, you know, there's so many other things that, you know, I said, when we, we're discussing blight, but there's so much more that we need to do. And I think we just need to have, uh, we need to discuss a strategy on how we want El Magordo to look in the next ten and fifteen years. Because for the last thirty, I don't think we've been thinking about that too much.
I think you're right.
I'd declare the whole area blight, and let's go, let's get it developed.
Don't go anywhere, Arby, I wanna follow up on what you said. We need comprehensive planning on housing for the whole county. What's stopping us from doing that? You're wrong.
Well, it is uh, challenging, because uh, if we were a state, as a county, we would be uh, forty-seventh or forty-sixth. Like, we're bigger than Hawaii, Rhode Island, and, and some other small, Delaware. Uh, yeah, drove through Delaware once, I was through it in half an hour. We're a big county, so getting that comprehensive uh, would be challenging. But um, right now, we're doing a comprehensive flood study across the whole county with the Army Corps of Engineers. So, I say, let's do it. Like, let's think big, let's get creative, there's multiple tools that are available. Let's get our toolbox, get the tools, and uh, you know, not limit ourselves by worrying about, well, this might not apply, and, and this might not apply. Let someone challenge it, uh, if, if they don't, um, let's go. That, that's, the legislative intent on this is to be broad and empower cities and counties to um, attract investment and development. And um, we have so much potential, it's a beautiful area, lots of resources, it just hasn't been capitalized on.
And what would you suggest going forth in that type of planning? City-county cooperation?
Absolutely.
Along with some of the research and support from Sacramento Mountain Foundation?
That is-
Who've done a study on this?
Mm-hmm.
She's right, it's time to get started. We, we need to start to work together to build this, cause we haven't done it.
Yeah.
And, and we can't blame anybody but ourselves at this point. So, I'm willing to work with you. Uh, a lot of people wanna get this done, but somebody has to do a comprehensive plan. It's gonna take some time, it's gonna take some organizations, it's gonna take some leadership, but it's time.
Okay, I'm gonna, um, just real quick, uh-
Thank you.
There was a letter that came out late this afternoon in the Daily News. Uh, I don't think it was sent to us, but it was in the Daily News, did you see it? Okay. Well, the article said, the article was, or the letter was from apparently Eddie Valencia. And he says in part that um, that the county and the chamber have spearheaded his efforts. And I take a little issue with that, because the city, the staff has been working on this for four years? Four years now. Our fire chief drove all the way down to Sunland Park to tour Eddie's projects down there. To help, am I, I'm right about that? And I believe that was um, to look at his, like, fire suppression system or something, or how they were, is that right? Yeah, okay. So, and, and we have met before about um, waiving taxes and that kinda thing. So, this is not the first conversation we have. I do agree that um, it's time, I can remember back when Brian Caesar was here and I, and saying, and I think Stephanie probably remembers me saying, there's gotta be some kind of incentives that we can give to get business here and to get development here. So, I don't, I, I'm not taking issue with his apartments. I'm taking issue with the strong-arming, and I do feel like the city has been strong-armed a little bit. Um, the, the letter also said tonight that he absolutely would not build unless we did this. If you recall the last meeting, he's, when we asked him that, when you asked him that, he said, no, not necessarily. If my recollection serves me right, and maybe I'm wrong, I thought he said he's already invested five million dollars. Is that what he said?
I don't remember the total.
I, I thought he said five million dollars, it was quite up there. And so, I find it a little hard to believe that he's going to walk away and lose all that money. Maybe I'm wrong, maybe he's got more money than, than he knows what to do with, I don't know. And, and I, I don't want him to walk away, I want him to build. We've been at this for four years now, we've been trying to get this thing done. And I have sat in on meetings since day one, so it's not like I don't know what I'm talking about. I have been there since day one. This city has bent over backwards to try to help him and get this done. And I take issue with some of the comments made. Because we've spent a lot of time and a lot of energy. And remember, every, every hour that our city staff spends to try to get this done, those are taxpayer dollars, and I keep going back to that. So, we've spent a lot of taxpayer dollars already trying to get this done. But I, I'm not against the apartments. I am against being strong-armed into doing something, or, or um, you know, being told that if we don't do this, he's gonna walk away. I, you know, listen, the decision to build is his decision, and we need them as much as anybody. But, but we need to make sure that we're making an informed decision, and a decision that is best for our taxpayers. And um, I'm not saying whether I'm comfortable with it or not, because as everybody knows by now, we only have four months left, so. But, I am a taxpayer, um, I own several properties in town, and I do have to pay taxes on every one of them. So, um, so yeah, I do have some concerns about that. But again, let me be clear, let me be clear, for those writing on their notepad, I am not against these apartments. I think that, that it is a, a much-needed thing in our city. I am just against, um, I'm just against, you know, being strong-armed and, and, and being pressured into making a decision that, that may not be a good decision for our city. I don't know, I don't know, I haven't, I, I thought this whole tax thing, we talked about this four years ago, he brought somebody down, I remember when um, Steve Boyle was the tax assessor at the time, he was in on the meeting. My understanding is somebody reached out to him recently, and he said he, and now that was, what were those? Those were um, industrial revenue bonds, so they were a little bit different, but um, but um, he said he thought it was a terrible idea, so, and he was the tax assessor at the time. I, you know, he's not a tax assessor now, so I don't know, whatever. But um, but just, I just wanna be clear, and, and that's why I'm saying this, is I wanna be clear. The city has been working with Mr. Valencia for four years. It's not like we haven't, it's not like we, we aren't doing anything. Cause quite frankly, I think our staff has bent over backwards to try to help them. And, and I just found those comments to be a little disingenuous, so.
We're getting a little off-topic here, but um, basically, I guess, for this item, if staff could kinda bring us what we kinda asked for from the other communities. And then, as far as the low-income portion of this goes, uh, if I'm not mistaken, if we have like a five oh one C three, like a, a nonprofit setup, we can partner with, like, I'm gonna utilize Mr. Wheeler's little foundation here, but we could partner with them to, to do something through, and, and I'm gonna throw Habitat out there as a, as a five oh one C three for the low-income portion of this. You know, and Commissioner Robinson had mentioned a, a plan. You know, maybe, maybe that's a piece of it, have that as a low income, and then have this for, for this portion. And then also, uh, look at, for Commissioner McDonald's District, Commissioner Burnett, and a part, portion of mine, I believe, where we could declare areas that are uh, blighted, and, and maybe look at some, you know, I'd asked a few years ago about doing some infill development programs in, in several of these districts. So, and I think that's kinda, I think that's where you're wanting to go, and I think that's kinda where you would like to see it. You know, not just this as a, as a project, but the whole city, you know? I hate to pick on your district, but your district has a lot of areas that, that would qualify for what we're trying to do here, so.
Yeah, I think the goal is to educate the community too, as to what, what our options are and what they're not. And, and what can be done, and why we haven't done anything yet, and what is our plan moving forward? I feel like we talk about it and talk about it, but then, I know we're working behind the scenes, but I think it's time to start making some decisions. And that's why I asked for this meeting, because I, I, as a new commissioner, need education on it as well. And so, if I'm having questions, I know that the community is too. So, anything we could do, um, kind of moving on from that, not Patriot Point specific. But if, if blighted doesn't help, if, if we can't, if that's not an option, if it gets pulled off the table, what are the city's other options for investors to incentivize builders to come here? What are, what are other ideas that we have or have been discussed in the past to make that happen?
So, some of the conversations that are still happening is the rewrite of our ordinances to make it easier. I don't wanna say lessen the standards, but make it, I guess, less complicated, um, to, to help with some of the timeframes. Density, you can reduce some of the setbacks so that you can have a denser. And I think we did that for, I believe Somerset is the one that we did that for. For, that's for market-based, for not for affordable housing. There's things we could do as far as giving, that's one thing we are looking at right now, is with um, Tommy Harrell. We can either lease, sell, or let a private developer develop for affordable or low-income, in this case, it would be homeless. That's any city property that the commission agrees to. Now, we're working in the background, that'll of course come to commission to say, yes, you, you guys are gonna authorize the use of this particular parcel for homeless, um, homeless housing. We can do, under Affordable Housing, there's Affordable Housing Act. And then, I just have a question for the commission, which is different than, reverse for a second. I was just given, shout out to Nolan for giving this to me. We have a re-Metropolitan Redevelopment Plan that was signed in twenty nineteen. Does anybody know about it?
No.
Yeah, shout out to-
I don't remember.
Shout out to Main Street, um-
When was it passed in nineteen, towards the end or beginning?
I'm trying to look at the date.
If it was towards the end of nineteen, that's kinda when the whole world stopped.
That's a hundred percent.
Could we revisit that, Stephanie?
No, that's what I was gonna suggest, is looking at this, re-updating it. Actually, it looks like it was at the beginning of twenty nineteen, the resolution is twenty nineteen zero one zero, but-
For the downtown area?
Can you read it, what does it say?
It's a big old P A D F, Downtown Metropolitan Redevelopment Area Plan.
So, it was just specific to downtown, though?
It is, but I mean, I think it was-
I was just gonna say, I think that was specific to the downtown area when it, when was Main Street? How long has Main Street been?
About that long.
Yeah, I think that was when we were, when Main Street was really getting up and going, if I'm not mistaken.
I, I'd never seen this, so I'm reading it, and it, it talks about downtown, but it has some inventory of other areas. So, I would like to revisit this and see if we can update this for maybe the city.
Could you forward that to us, or send it out to us?
Yeah, I will, yeah.
Yeah, I do believe that that was connected to, remember Cam Wildy used to be in charge of Main Street, and I think that was back in that time. And um, I think it was connected to that specific area, yeah.
It may have been, that area down there's an SBA hub zone too, so it may, may have been something along those lines.
And then Darrell, Darrell looked at, um, to answer some of Commissioner Raridens' questions, he looked at the areas for Las Cruces. It looks like Las Cruces downtown, and I, most of you know Las Cruces where Motel Boulevard is. Motel Boulevard, um, Picacho, that's one of the areas that they declared, and so, that makes sense.
Well, and that was kinda middle town.
There's a lot of vacant land down in that area.
That's, that makes sense though, because that's where a lot of the homeless population, that's where Community of Hope is in that area.
Down there, uh, West Valley and Main down over in that area?
If you go straight down to Picacho, down through Picacho Valley, all that, pass that area.
That, that specific- That specific uh, redevelopment uh, area is from Motel to BNSF Rail, with Valley going right down the middle, and Picacho basically making the, the interments.
I was gonna say, there's a lot of vacant land down in there in that area.
The other area was, the other area was um, where Young Park is, in that, I guess, south of where, yeah, Young Park. In that area, you have hit Salado, you hit um, Lowman, in that, Missouri, in that area. If you, if you're familiar with it, it's back there where like, in that area, where there's a high crime-
Across from that, that one Walmart over there, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Behind like Texas Road House over in there?
Yeah, yeah, further down that way, but yes, behind that area, that was the other area, and I don't remember where you showed me. And then Los Alamos, I don't, it's a pretty big area, but I'm not familiar with where that is. So, we can, we can dig this in and send this out a little more, but just kind of, since we all kinda know Las Cruces, that's the general areas of where they're calling, where they're doing the MRAs.
I kinda agree with the county attorney on this, since this is a new deal, that, let's try it and see, and let somebody challenge us. Cause that's the only way we're gonna know, one way or the other, is when it challenges in court. If the court rules with us, then we're okay, if they rule against us, then we're not. But I mean, it's, it's kind of a gamble, but- But I mean, it's, it's kind of a gamble, but since it's new.
If we don't try, we won't know.
Yeah, that's, that's true. I, I do want to look, re-look at this, but we've also gotten in trouble by doing that. I kind of want to look at trying to develop a housing plan. We can work with the distressed cities and persistent poverty technical assistance program to help us get a housing strategy. They will help us, kind of give us a roadmap to where we go and do, do a study on the whole housing area. Again, this is a hundred percent the commission. I think, I would love to sit in front of like Rudy and Dennis and all them and say, this is what we're doing for all of y'all to incentivize and to light a fire to develop not just the apartments, Patriot Points and Door Apartments, but all of our housing units, the single housing. So, I mean, that's just because on our end, these are the people that we're look, we're working with. These are the issues we're seeing as well. I kind of want to hold comprehensive. What are we going to do for everybody? So we can say, hey, the commission approved this for you Rudy. This is for you Dennis, so.
Do, what is, what is a, a timeframe on something like that? Because I, I know it's a hurry up and wait game, but I feel like sometimes we take way too long to make decisions or actions.
So some, I don't know the timeframe. I can talk to them. We have people on call that we can ask for a quote and see how fast we can get this going as well. But the fact that they started something downtown gives us a little bit of a head start because at least we kind of have a roadmap. Even if it's just condensed to an area, we can look at expanding that throughout the city.
Just kind of for, for example, with Alamo Gordo specifically, while, when we just got, that brought to our attention. It looks like the downtown metropolitan redevelopment area was designated by commission back in 2017. And then in 2019 is when that resolution passed. So, so they do take some time at least. So for example, in the Las Cruces ones, just using them as an example, some of them go faster, some of them go slower. So like in this one, it started in April of 2024. And then is set to, and then again, got brought up in just recently in, I believe it was March, was designated, officially designated. And they're, and they're starting to proceed. So I mean, it just kind of varies on, on the time. But, but yeah, they, they, they have the plans. So that's just a general estimate of what Alamo is seeing with theirs and then its neighboring cities.
If I just weigh in real quick, after talking to Module Spurling, we were going to try, when we, we thought Patriot Points needed a lot more done, we were going to try and do it like six months. But they said six months to a year is normal. For Patriot Point, what they're asking for right now, because they have to have evidence and documentation to HUD for the feds, by the middle of October, is a simple resolution committing to doing the process that identifies the area, the project and the goal or what, what we're working towards, which should be a seven-year RTA redevelopment tax abatement. And so that's all he needs by mid-October to be able to proceed with the financing. So that would be a resolution with that information from the city and the county. Module Spurling is, is ready to go and, and accomplish it for both of us. They just need to go ahead.
Is that something we can do jointly? Or is that something that needs to be specific county and then specific city? Or is it something that we can combine in total to present?
We, we each have to do it.
Okay.
And actually, I mean, the county doesn't have to be involved. We, the, the county commission wanted to, to facilitate this, so that's why they're involved. But because it's in the city, it needs a concurrence from the city.
Okay, okay. Thank you for that information.
I, I had a question. So the things that were in his proposal about the sidewalks and everything, is that what we're agreeing to or?
No.
Okay.
Just the tax.
It's a, it's a property tax abatement.
Good, never.
Well, and moving forward, just to incentivize, right? You know, further progress. So moving on from that, we kind of have an idea of what we need to be looking at.
So now can you clarify for sure exactly what the direction is? Cause the problem, I think what we have at staff is there's seven of you and seven completely different ideas of what housing should be. And so I don't, I honestly, what do you want?
So I would like, first of all, to get a question answered about the Patriot Point specific area. Can it be, if it were, could it even be considered blight?
So to answer that one real quick, while, after you asked that question, I started doing specific, looking up on there.
Okay.
If, and I won't say definitively, but it does appear that even if like somebody owns a building, even if the building was built upon, like there was an actual building there, the area would still be considered blight. They would then have to make substantial improvements to be eligible. So it's not that like, well, I already have a building here, I'm SOL. You could receive some of those benefits if you're improving and activating upon the, the plan, which would be to improve. So I believe in this case, and I, I will confirm, if we're using Patriot Point as a specific example, even though they own the property, if it was designated a blighted area, they would still be able to receive the benefits as long as they are making a substantial improvement to the area.
Okay.
Which a, a building would do.
I, I just do want to clarify Commissioner McDonald's question. He is asking for both from the city. He's only asking from the tax abatement from the county, but he's asking from that, from the city. We have a separate letter that came to the city requesting an incentive for, I think, I can't remember the amount, but it, from the documentation that he provided to us, he's requesting both.
So, and that total is about 445,000?
I can't remember. He sent the letter, but I just, there's a lot of numbers floating through my head. I don't think it was that much. I want to say it was about almost 200,000.
There were two. One is like 159 and that was for the sidewalks. And then the other one totaled about 445,000.
Yeah, but those aren't on the plate anymore.
Yeah, it's not the, it's not that stuff. It's the property tax abatement.
No, he asked them that from the county. That's why the county's doing it. He has asked other stuff from the city. He's asking for both.
As far as the sidewalks and all that kind of stuff, there's not a whole lot. I don't think the city can even do on that, so.
I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah.
Just wanted to clarify. Need our direction on our side too.
So I think we're, I think we're all on board in saying that we're specifically discussing the tax payment.
And not the sidewalks?
Right.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
None of the other stuff that was on that list, that, what, two or three meetings ago, I don't think any of that stuff we can reasonably do.
That's my understanding correct? Okay.
If it were a low income housing project, there was a, a grant cycle through the state that is, that you can do that. And because it's for low income, it goes around.
I just discussed that. It's the housing, Affordable Housing Act. We, that's why I said if it was affordable housing, this is not. There are certain things we can do that. The infrastructure and that stuff is one of them. But this is not affordable housing, so I don't want to confuse the matter.
Okay.
It's not section eight, no.
No, the clarification is good and education is good. Thank you. So I think that's where we're at. The tax abatement issue, can we find out? How do we move forward with, with declaring something blight? What's the process we need to do to find that out? You know, where, where does the roadmap take us that way? So that we can move forward with the progression of that? And then are we willing to do a declaration stating that it is something we're considering and working on so that they have a declaration that they can submit? Is that something we're willing to do? I guess I'm asking you guys.
So as far as the resolution goes, I think it should just be added to like maybe the next meeting. And we discuss it and if everybody's in favor of it, we vote on it, pass it. If they're not, then we, we don't. So as far as that resolution goes, we, we can just do that, address that.
We can just add it to the agenda?
Yeah.
So can we ask to do that?
The next meeting.
Yeah.
So is this just special for?
No, this is.
Overall?
Yeah, like every, what is our, yeah, blight. And then for Patriot Point.
Okay, I'm confused now. So the resolution is just for Patriot Point?
The resolution is just for Patriot Point because they need that.
But not a resolution for the whole city?
Not for the whole city.
Okay.
Just declaring, declaring our intent to, to declare that blighted, that area. And one other question for Darrell is, do we have to do a big area? Or can we just do that vacant area that?
No, so the, the statute is purposely very broad to allow a city to, to declare the area that it needs, however you all would decide that. Again, that's where, you know, it just kind of depends. The, the bigger the area, you know, there's a bit more data to support why we're doing it. The smaller the area, it makes it more difficult. But again, if, if this, if the commission feels confident in that designation, then, you know, it can be the size of a lot.
But like in the Mesa Village, like say we were to do something similar to this for them in Mesa Village, then we could just declare the area where the apartments are going to be built as blighted?
In, in theory, yes, you absolutely could. It would just, again, we just have to make sure that we'd be able to stand up to, to judicial scrutiny if, if challenged.
Okay.
And I, I will say, it does make it more difficult. It does, doesn't mean it's impossible at all though.
I have faith in you. I think you can do it.
So why can't we, why can't we just create a program? Why, why are we doing this piece by piece instead of just creating a?
Due to the time constraints, I think, in this particular incident. But, you know, as far as like Commissioner McDonald's district, my district and Commissioner Burnett's.
I think all of those need to be addressed.
Yeah, all of that needs to be addressed. And, and I agree with you. We need to come up with a plan of how, you know, my district, I think, is pretty well filled up. There's a lot here or there, but like yours and Steve's basically.
And this would apply to not just apartments, but it, it could apply to housing developments as well.
Correct.
Anything.
Then I think every builder in Alamo Gordo should just come and apply to do the same thing.
Well, that's what I was going to ask. If we're just doing this for Patriot Point, does that open us up for every builder who wants to go in an area and declare it as blight?
Yes.
Is that something that we're going to have to do each time? Somebody wants to have a certain piece of.
And the legal challenge, because, I mean, I, I understand that Ian was more in favor of this, but Chris Marhead is like, you're going to have legal challenges as well. Because if you're going to call that area blight, then, you know, we can call the Granada Hills area blight. We can call the Somerset subdivision blight and they can all come and do that.
Kind of like Arby said, it's the whole city, right? I mean, we're, we could really substantially say that every area has areas that are blight in them.
That's what I'm asking. So like if somebody's building in, well, it's what I call the golf course area. I guess, I was thinking of like, I don't know if French Brothers is still building that development off of Hamilton? That looks like they were preparing it. So we could potentially call that blight? Even, yeah.
I don't think that's what we're focusing on. I think we're focusing on the areas that we know for sure to be blight.
Well, I understand that, but if they build there and they come to us and they say.
To answer Commissioner, I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tem, your question. It, it, it does, it does open the city up to that. You know, if, if there's a developer that wants that same type of treatment, it does open us up to that. So I mean, again, there, there are really good pros and there are some serious cons. I, with, but that's with any, any development plan.
And if we don't take a chance and try to do something, we're just sitting again.
And, and that's why this, you know, this meeting is here. That's why we're going to do our research and why we're working with, you know, council that's assigned with us. We're working with the county, with the municipal league. We're trying to present that information so that you guys can make an informed decision as the elected body. So that, you know, that there's always going to be a pro and con to, to every, everything, but.
Is there a lot of case law pertaining to this?
So there is not too much because it is relatively, it's been mainly only used in Albuquerque and it's used a lot in Albuquerque. However, it's only been about the last five to six years that other cities have started using it. And, you know, it's, a lot of the cities, they're, they're answering the same questions you guys are. Is, is this a, a undertaking we want to take? Do we want to, you know, deal with developers asking for this same type of treatment? Cause I mean, that's, that will come up. But again, Las Cruces, Al, Los Alamos, Gallup, Farmington, Albuquerque are the ones that I know for sure that have them actively going on. And, and Las Cruces again, just recently, I believe in March of this year, assigned. And I said four, it, it was two, but I was, I was reading the, they're giving them double names for the, the Main Street. So it was, it was two, but they've done two in the past. So it's four total, but. So it, it's just something that, that we wanted to present as, as options so that way you guys can make informed decisions. We'll work on some of the questions you've provided. So that way you guys can make those decisions and we can proceed. I mean, there's, there's still, and this is just the one option. I mean, there's still the, the grip possibilities. There's other possibilities, but this is one that has been brought to the forefront and is, it is gaining popularity in New Mexico.
I think as far as our grip ordinance, we, we ought to maybe have staff start revamping that and bring that back as a, as an alternative. If we have an area, you know, where we, we can't, you know, utilize the blight or this redevelopment, we could, we could offer that grip ordinance as a, you know, it would be good for smaller projects. You know, one this size, it, it would probably kill us. We'd have to put a cap on the amount of money we would give back.
I think it needs to have a cap anyway.
You know, the reason it went away is a little bit of history to some of y'all that weren't here. When it went away, it was because the hospital was doing a $60 million deal and COVID hit and we were getting hit for a little over a million bucks. And it was just going to, it was going to kill us. So that's why we repealed it at the time, so. But, you know, look at maybe bringing that back as a, as an incentive.
Stephanie, can we do that as well? Look into at grip, what was wrong when we did it the first time? How we can revamp it? Okay, just as an alternative option?
Grip is actually, no, there wasn't anything wrong with it. Grip was actually a really good program.
I think the only thing was that it didn't have a cap on it.
That's the biggest issue, that you don't have a cap. Yeah, it, it worked well.
So I think that's something else we can look at if this is a decision we decide not to make. But I would like to come up with a resolution to kind of press forward for Patriot just so we can say we're working on something so that they can move forward. I think that's only fair.
And I think one other thing, I said, I'm not against any part of moving forward and investigating. But I think we had a particularly different sort of problem here is because we had no, no comps to compare. And when I listened to Los Alamos and Albuquerque and Farmington, Las Cruces and any other place, they have not had that problem. So they're able to move ahead without those type of issues. And so because we are, you know, in this type of situation, I think we do have to look at it closely. And I would love to have something to move forward. I said, because I'd like to have incentives for people to want to build here. But we have those issues that we have to deal with too. And I think those should be considered before we, you know, strike out and just think that this is going to be a, a great thing. We just, and I, I think we're doing that, so. But I, I do know the comps were an issue. So I, I've never, I haven't been in a city or a town where we haven't built apartments in over 20 years and then we didn't have any comps to go with it.
And then I need to correct myself. It wasn't shout out to Nolan, it was a shout out to Courtney. Thank you Courtney.
What was that for?
She's the one who gave us the Redevelopment Act for downtown.
Oh, okay, gotcha, yeah. I think I, I do think I remember something about it, but I, I think it was specific. I mean, not that it was specifically for downtown, but I think that was specifically the reason we did it was for that downtown area. And I, I really believe it was something with Main Street, but I don't know. I could be wrong.
Still gives us a good outline, I think, to get started on Sharon's district.
Does that give you guys what you need to kind of start working on that?
Yeah, and then also wants to shout out to Sacramento Foundation for the food outside.
Yes, thank you. I haven't got to eat it yet, but it looks delicious.
I would eat it up here, but then my husband, I'd go home and he'd go, you do not need to be eating on camera, so.
I'm okay with moving forward if you guys. Are we okay to move on?
Okay, so yes, I guess we're ready to move on. I don't know. I, are we ready to move on? Thank you, Commissioner Robinson. I think I'll move on now.
Good.
All right.
So moved.
Or I could just talk for another 15 minutes. That would be special, wouldn't it? I'm sure you guys would love to hear that. Okay.
So on item three I brought forward.
Hold on a second, I have to read it first.
Oh, okay.
I apologize.
No, you're fine.
But they make me do it. We're going to move on to item three, discussion of the process and listing of city properties regarding vacant, dilapidated and abandoned structures.
Okay, so I brought this one up just because it's been discussed in the past when I first came on the commission, probably because I have a small spectrum, since I'm a realtor, that we do have all these structures we're talking about. And I was curious how many the city owned, what we were doing with those, can they be sold? We have investors in town who are willing, able and wanting to purchase and rebuild, which would provide good buildings for low income. So I just asked Stephanie to look at this and give us kind of an update of where are our properties, how many do we have, and how can we push forward in selling these, so to speak?
So I, yes, I have that information, but I kind of want to start at the beginning of this.
Okay.
From before, when we get them, because it's a whole big of a process. So we currently, we're researching 51, 51 lots that may or may not belong to the city. It depends on foreclosure and that, so we'll get that listing out. These are all lots.
Oh, just vacant?
And they could have houses, that's what we're researching, that, researching. And I know that some of these are no longer in the city's position, possession. So we're still researching that, but there's 51 potentials. There's 121 dilapidated structures in different stages. But before we get to how, what we can do with these lots, I wanted Josh to come up and discuss the whole process, because it's a, it's a process.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners, Dr. Hernandez. I am Josh Sides, the Code Enforcement Manager. So with dilapidated structures is, is like Dr. Hernandez says, it's a long, lengthy process. It first starts by identification. So identifying a dilapidated structure, a blighted structure, which can come either from code enforcement identifying or any individual in the public going, hey, this may be dilapidated, you need to go look at it, which we do. Once it's identified, a letter is sent to the property owner, certified, requesting consent to inspect. This letter is sent because by state law, I cannot get an inspection search warrant without requesting consent. So I mail a letter certified to the property owner, asking them for consent, giving them two weeks to get back to me. If they get back to me and allow me consent, then we do a consented inspection. So we'll go with the property owner, we'll walk through, we'll talk about things, and I tell them I'll have a, a letter for you of everything that I found that's wrong, that you need to correct. If they do not, then I apply for a search warrant or an inspection warrant, and I go and inspect the property. And a district judge has to sign off on that warrant. I have to show significant probable cause to violate someone's Fourth Amendment right, so. Now, with, with the inspections, after the inspections are done, then the property owners do get mailed a notice of violation, basically. It is a lengthy letter, it's usually anywhere between 12 and 20 pages long, depending, depending, with listing out every violation that I have found and its text in International Property Maintenance Code. And also listing out, this is how you correct that violation, this is how you correct this violation. So it is very easy to go through while daunting, because it is thick, but it does give you step by step, this is how you correct those, those issues. If the, from that letter, you are given 30 days to, to do one of two things. Correct all the violations or contact code enforcement with a plan. How are you going to, to correct these violations? Here's where things have changed. So in the past, after the letter's gone out, we have condemned properties and then given two years. We have found that that is actually going against state law and city ordinance, so we've reversed that and actually moved that step to the notice of violation step. So I send you a letter today that says you have all these violations, this is how you correct them. If you make contact with me, absolutely, I'll give you two years to correct them, as long as you keep me in the loop of what you're doing. Just keep me in the loop, that's all I ask. And you don't got to call me every week, every month, you know, touch base with me every three months, every six months, as long as you're keeping in contact and I'm not having to wonder, is anything going on? Obviously, if I can drive down the street and there's something going on, I'm not going to bother you, but if nothing's happened, I'm going to start making contact and asking some questions. So if you do not contact me after the 30 days and you didn't correct the violations, I bring a resolution for condemnation to the commission. If the commission agrees that it is dilapidated and it needs to be condemned, it is condemned. The resolution is then certified mail to the property owner, and that, that resolution states, and by state law, they have 10 days to commence demolition. There's no other options at this point. You demo. That is state law, that's city ordinance, that's what they have to do. So the process, when I first started, was very long, took two years. It has, in some cases, can take two years, but in some cases has narrowed down to 45 days, 60 days. It, it's narrowed down to some, some of these bad ones. In the last month and a half, I've demolished, oh, I shouldn't say I've demolished, I've hired a contractor to demolish six structures in Alamogordo. Four of those were in District Five. I have three more coming within the next month, roughly.
One of them Dewey Lane?
It is. So.
We can have a party on that lot when we're done, just so you know. I'm kidding.
Dewey, Dewey is one of them. So that is, and then once a, a structure has been demolished and it is flat ground, the city, and this is a big misconception, I get calls probably from the same people you get calls from, from other people who are interested, hey, don't tear this down, we, or even after we've torn down, we, city does not own that property. I get a bill from the contractor of, whoever demolished the property. I pay the contractor and then I send the bill with a lot of backup documentation to our accounts receivable department. Our accounts receivable then generates an invoice and mails it to the property owner. Property owner has so long to, to pay the invoice. If not, then it goes to legal for foreclosure. And then after that timeframe, and this is all, I just send paperwork after that timeframe's kind of, well, leave it to Evelyn and Daryl to talk on those two timeframes. But after that, then it gets foreclosed on and there's still some timeframe before it actually is the city's.
Okay. That is a process.
It's a long one.
So, let me, so it stops with Josh. 90 days is usually the invoice period. Then in legal, legal gets the paperwork and they fire, file the paper to lean, then lean, you foreclose. And then after the judge awards the foreclosure, there's a one-year redemption period. So it's technically still not ours, even after foreclosure, because a redemption period basically states that the property, the original property owner can come back and pay whatever the lien and all the, the fees, interest, all that, and get the property back. So it can take three years, maybe more, for, for us to actually be the true owners. And then once that happens, we file at, at the county to say this are now in the city's name.
So how many properties do we have that have cleared that entire process, do we know? Or that's what you're still working on?
That's what I'm looking at. This morning, I, like I said, there's 51. We have some that's already cleared. There's probably about 18 of those. But the rest of the 51, we're kind of trying to verify. I have some, the, some dates where they were awarded. We did a mass one in 2023, and we got them awarded in 2024. Some of them late in 2024, so we're still in that redemption period.
Okay.
Okay, so let me ask you, go back to, you cite them, did you say they have, what did you say about cleaning up their property?
So when I send you your letter, after I've identified a blighted structure, a dilapidated structure, and I send you, this is, this is a letter that says, these are all the things you're violating, this is how you correct them, you have 30 days to get in either contact with me, which if you've done a consent inspection, we've already in contact, you know it's coming, we've already, we've already talked about this, I said, I tee it up, and so there's exchange information. If the property owner, if I had to do a search warrant, then I send this to the property owner, and at the bottom of the letter is, you have 30 days to contact me or correct all the violations. If not, a resolution will go before the City of Alamogordo Commission to condemn this property.
Okay. So what if they do contact you?
So then from there is where I start working with them. Okay, this is, this is all the violations you had. And usually I start with a question of, how long do you think you need?
Okay.
Because if I tell them two years and they only need six months, they're going to wait 18 months.
Two years, right.
So they're going to wait. So how long do you think you need? How long do you think you need to get through the first half? How long do you think you need? And usually with them telling me, hey, I need six months to do the roof and exterior. Okay. So at six months, am I going to hold it to and then come with a condemnation? No, I'm going to make contact with them again, go, hey, what happened? Life happens. Could be a death in the family, it could have got sick. Who knows what could have happened at that point? But making contact with them again, going, hey, and it's a general rule, like I should be able to do this, it's a general rule, in six months. Okay, no problem. So I'm going to get in contact with them, but a little calendar reminder, remind me, hey, in six months, make contact with them, if that's not done, so.
Okay, so, but, okay, so let's say six months, nothing's done, then what?
Then I'm going to contact them again, excuse me, I'm going to contact them again, go, hey, what happened?
Okay.
Did life happen or you just didn't do it?
Right, I understand that.
So then from there, I have to by International Property Maintenance Code, give them more time. Okay, that's fine, I'm going to give you more time. And at the point where we reach to, and I have a property right now, I'm getting ready to demolish, and why are you getting ready to demolish it? Well, it's been two years and you haven't done anything.
So we have to give them up to two years?
If the windows are boarded, windows and doors are boarded, I can give them one year.
One year, right.
Now, I don't, if I send a crew out to board that because of safety, I will give you two years.
Okay.
If you've boarded them because you knew it was that bad, I'm going to give you one year to do what you need to do on the outside.
Okay.
Then we can talk about getting more time.
Okay. So, and I'm sorry, but I'm going through this step by step, because obviously I get a lot of phone calls for this. I called you about one today, actually. Okay. So you give them up to two years. Two years hits, right? They haven't done anything.
Then I, then what I do is, we have a contract with a construction company that does the asbestos testing, abating and demolition. I get a task order together, I get it sent over for signatures, and I get them mobilized to start demolishing.
Okay. So what is the timeframe for that? Let's just say realistically, two years hits, they haven't done anything, then what is your timeframe?
With this new contractor, pretty quick. So I just had the three, the three Dewey, one on White Sands and one on Virginia, that I sent out for signature last Friday. It was signed and completed, the task order was sent out last Friday, it was signed and completed, I believe, on Wednesday, because we had that internet outage. So the contractor called me, said, hey, I'd love to sign these, but I can't. So it was completed Wednesday, I had POs Wednesday, and I sent them to him, no, I'm sorry, I had the POs today, I sent them to him today. He applied for his CID permits today. As soon as he gets them in, he's mobilizing.
Okay, so then my next question is, could you explain for everybody, everybody here, everybody watching, what, what it is that code enforcement is limited to? In other words, let's say there's cars that are parked out in front of their house that are not registered. We know that that's not legal.
Correct.
Or let's say that, because another call I get is, they have like standing water or a pool in the backyard and it's got like bugs coming out of it, or there, you, you see what I'm getting at? So can you explain what it is that you're limited to and what, what another agency, I guess, for lack of a better term, would, would have to step in?
So the big one we get, and I'm sure you get a lot of, and I'm sure the majority of the commission gets a lot of, is, is abandoned vehicles on streets. We get a lot of complaints about vehicles being on streets with flat tires. We, as code enforcement, do not handle anything parked on a street. We send that over to the police department and generally, a, a public service aide takes care of that.
Okay.
With vehicles parked on property with flat tires or up on jacks, that's our realm. That's where we come in and we do the investigation, we send notices. And with procedural due process, we have to give everybody 15 days unless specific things are, are met, like it is a public safety risk, a health risk, right? Leaking sewage is a public safety risk. You don't have 15 days, you get it fixed right now. You generally three days, is I, what we call it is a three-day notice. You have three days to get it fixed.
So if they're working on their car, you don't really say anything, but if it's 15 days and it's still on jacks, then it's a code violation?
Well, it's a code violation that day. So I, I go out to your property today and I see that, or I'm driving down the street and I, and I see that you have a car with four flat tires in your driveway. I'm going to go, I'm going to go knock, and my officer should go knock and make contact with you, go, hey, why is, what's going on with the car? Oh, it's, you know, my, it's been here forever, my husband won't sell it, or whatever the reason is. Okay, well, you're going to need to put air in those tires or whatever you gotta do to make it operable. And an operable motor vehicle is one that can be driven on the street. So if it's got expired registration, it is inoperable. You need to go get it registered. If it's got partially dismantled, so missing a, a side view mirror, a crack in the windshield, by letter of the law, yes. But if it's, looks like it was.
But you're nicer than that, come on.
Yes. If it looks like it was in a, one of those crash derbies, demolition derbies, we're, we're going to, we're going to stop and talk to you. We're going to have a conversation.
Okay, so there is a house, and I know you and I have talked about this one, it's over in my area. You know exactly where I'm talking about. How many violations did you tell me they had?
I think it was hundreds. I cited them every day for, from December to, I think, February or March.
Okay, so whatever happened with that? I noticed they cleaned it up a little bit.
Let's be, so I went to court, they didn't show, but I went to court and they just started cleaning on their own. We haven't, I've never talked to them after that, after I've told them and given them some.
I would also just suggest that we keep personal, individual examples to a different discussion, not on.
Okay, well, that's fine. I mean, I'm using it, I get it, I'm just using it as an, an example. I'm trying to figure out, because I get a lot of questions on, so what can code do or what can they do?
Right, and, and I think that's great. I was just, I was just saying, we might, suggesting we might want to limit to.
Yeah. I did, yeah, I'm sorry, I just meant, I noticed they cleaned it up, so you would leave them alone, is what I'm.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Quick question on that process. So you say after the two years, doesn't the commission still have to, before you have it demolished, don't they still have to declare it condemned?
Correct.
So when is that process in your two-year?
That's, two years comes before condemnation now, because before.
So at the end of the two years, you have to bring it to us with the resolution, get us to condemn it, and then you can tear it down at any time?
Correct. If, if it's one of those cases where I've made contact and they say they're going to fix it, but two years goes and they haven't done anything, then that's when I bring the resolution, so.
You'd skip that part, you said, I can just get a PO and tear it down? Like, doesn't the commission have to condemn it first?
I said it the first time, I have my notes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So you're, you're okay, you're right. I do have to get a, it has to be condemned. And the only way in the state of New Mexico to be condemned is by a local, local governing body.
So then that brings me to my next question. Sorry, but I'm going to get all these questions out. Once we condemn a piece of property, okay, it's condemned.
Could be rescinded.
They, they have time to clean it up. Okay, the process has changed, so I'm, that's what I'm asking. So, so you give them two years, they haven't made headway, whatever, so now we've condemned it. So once we condemn it, can it be uncondemned?
Yes.
Like, I know in the past it could, so can it still?[1653.25]
Yes, it still can. So we've done that, one specifically was on Crescent, which we uncondemned. In fact, I have a resolution coming in September to uncondemn several more.
Okay, so if, okay, so then what if we condemn it and they don't do anything with it? Is the only alternative to tear it down, right?
Yes.
Okay, so once, once we've condemned it, the homeowner does not reach back out, Dewey Lane, I guess, would be a good example of that, right? That's the only alternative. The only thing we can do at that point is tear it down.
We have to abate the violations. So I'm kinda thinking of two different properties. One of them was one of my very first ones I condemned back two years ago, and that property, the structure itself, was structurally sound. It was the amount of garbage and trash and refuse in the front yard, in the house, and in the backyard, to the degree that there was a
And that's the one we talked about today?
We talked about. There was a Ford Ranger in the backyard, nobody knew about until the contractor was over there taking all the trash out. So that's how much trash was there. So structurally, there was nothing wrong with the house. It was the amount of trash that was there. So we abated that problem because nobody else would, and then we went through the lien and that process.
So we would decide whether structurally it was sound or not?
There is the ability, which I'm just putting this out there, but this is not what the city has the ability to do. We could, if it was structural, build it up, but we don't have the money or the, that's not our area. So for us, the remedy is demolition.
Right, so, and that's really what I'm getting at. So let's say structurally, let's say we condemned it and structurally it was bad. We cannot, at that point, sell it, right? We have to tear it down. That's what I'm getting at.
So we could, there has been situations where they have been sold in between this, and the condemnation follows the property. I don't, Josh, does the two years or the time stamp still stands, correct?
That's when we start getting into where International Property Maintenance Code puts a lot of leeway on the code official, where the code official starts making decisions, what's based on code but also reasonable. So I've had properties who have been condemned and needed to be completely gone through. I've even, there was one that even came back and it was uncondemned because it was sold and the new property owners remodeled the whole thing. So there are instances with that, and so say it's been a year into the process, that's when the new property owners and I typically will have, and I shouldn't say typically, we do have a conversation, as long as I'm in the loop, which is what I tell the original property owner, hey, if you're selling this, you can, there's nothing wrong with that. If you will just let me know who the new property owners are so I can make contact with them and start getting a plan of
So there's still a window in there, even after we condemn it, because they do technically still own it, where they can sell it.
Well, technically, yes, but it's a ten-day window.
It's a very small one. No, I get it, it's a very small
I think a good example is the Avis Building. If you recall, in twenty twenty-three, in November, somewhere around there, we condemned it. And although it's still not livable, he's actively working towards it. So it does work in some instances.
Okay, okay, so that's what I'm getting at, because these are all the questions that I get. And I thought I knew the answers until you said something changed. So I wanna make sure that everything is still as it has been for the past
Got a quick question on that.
How long have I been here, ten years or whatever?
Got a quick question. The one you keep referencing, the one on Dewey over there, you know, that house, it burnt, but it's still, for the most part, structurally sound. Is there any programs in place, instead of, you know, basically in that neighborhood, you're gonna tear it down, it's gonna be a vacant lot for the rest of our lives. It's never gonna get rebuilt unless there's just somebody that wants to live there. Is there any programs through the state or anything in place to where we can
There's tons of rehabilitation through the state, that are for homeowners, single-family dwelling homeowners, yes.
Okay, but there's nothing that we, as a city, could do to rehabilitate that structure rather than
We could rehabilitate it, and then we would, but that's where the issue kinda comes into place because it's not ours at that time. It's not ours until we do something, put money into it, lean it, and foreclose it. And so it's not ours. So that's kinda where it gets a little bit tricky.
Just some of these, you know, that we've done in the past few years, they're, we can rehabilitate them. You know what I mean? And as a builder, that's where I have an issue, because I see the potential for those. It wouldn't cost that much money to make those livable again, instead of tearing them down and ending up with a vacant lot forever, you know, in an older neighborhood. So I just didn't know if there's anything that the city, at that point, could do to rehabilitate those, you know.
I, and
Like the one on Michigan, for instance, that's down there, I think we've already passed a resolution, condemned that one. You know, that one is a good candidate to repair and rehabilitate, in my eyes.
So that's gonna be a commission option, of course, if that's a program you want to implement. Like I said, I don't know the technicalities because we've never gone that, but we can, we gotta fix the code violations and we can bring it up. But there's funding, just like funding's associated with demo, demo's cheaper for the city to do.
It is.
And then there becomes that issue of, we've put this money in, we lean it, we foreclose it, they kinda, like, we're we're kinda just, we're not builders here, and I don't know, it's kind of year-old decision if that's the road you wanna go down.
Once we're in that two-year period, I mean, would it be beneficial for us to say, hey, here's some state programs to those owners, say, hey, here's some programs that you can apply for?
We can always do that, for sure. That's an easy fund.
Maybe get them rehabilitated within the two-year period, you know.
The funding doesn't work that fast.
I'm not sure how it works.
It doesn't, because we've had people who are on that list that are approved for MFA, and it's somewhere like five years down. Sometimes you die before you get the
Yeah, no, we do the same thing. We have property owners that come to us and they own their properties, that's not the issue, there's no mortgage on it, but applying for those programs is, it takes a very, very long, there's a huge waiting list, and that's part of the issue. So the Dewey Lane, I probably need to clarify because it's not the house that I'm frustrated about. It's the waste of law enforcement resources because of the people that continually are squatting in that house. They're slapping our judge in the face, they're slapping our judicial system in the face because they keep going back to this house that they've been trespassed from, and sometimes it's a daily occurrence, and so it's just a waste of money. That's why I said that, just to be clear, it's not that I particularly want this down. Although I did feel sorry for the young man that came here almost in tears, if you guys remember. He was here almost in tears because of this house and being harassed, and and I think, so I think for me, I do think we need to, I would love to see these houses rehabbed, but but I have to tell you that I have a real concern because, you know, property owners take care of their houses, they, you know, they work on their yards, they do all of these things, and then they have this thing next door, and how unfair is that? That they have to live next door to that because somebody chooses not to take care of that property, and and so that's why I'm so adamant on either clean it up or tear it down or do something, because it's just not, it brings down property values when things like that happen.
If I could, real quick, Commissioner Rorden, one of your concerns was the structural integrity in question. So international codes are rewritten every three years. So in twenty twenty-four, a new code came out, that's why there's been some changes in the way things are done. When structural integrity, and I'm thinking IHOP, when it got hit by a car a few months ago. I have the ability now to tell the property owner, you need to get a structural engineer to assess this and provide me with a stamped copy that says this is structurally fine. So IHOP was a good candidate on that. Myself and the fire department went in there and said, hey, we're not sure, this hit a beam, I mean, any feet, either which way to go through a window, but it managed it. And so they got a structural engineer in there, I met with him, he said, nope, it's fine. And as soon as that happened, go ahead and open it back up. So there, and there's a property on White Sands that I've told the property owner, get me a structural engineer's report that says that it is structurally sound, and by all means, go do whatever you need to do.
Okay. All right, so then I did ask you about, like, what if there's like, I don't know, rodents or something, like, what about that, that scenario?
So when it comes to rodents or insects, with International Property Maintenance Code, there is two different codes when it comes to infestation. One specifically speaks of rodents, and one specifically speaks of insects. So under that, anything where ants, mice, rats, things of that nature that are infesting.
So you can cite them for that? Okay, okay, perfect.
One thing I didn't want you to cover, Josh, just overall, in general, talk about how many code enforcement officers you have out there and how many properties each of you have, because there's a misconception that code isn't doing enough. Tell them why, what you got.
Well, so with, we've talked tonight about all the additions of housing and things like that, coming into Alamogordo. Alamogordo has five sworn code enforcement officers. I'm one of them, I have four for the rest of Alamogordo. I deal predominantly with the dilapidated structures, that leaves the other four, which the city has split up into quadrants, Tenth and Washington being the center point. So you have southeast, I'm sorry, southwest, southeast, northwest, northeast, and there's a lot of properties in each one of those quadrants, that each one of my officers are, that is your area, you go through it, you know it, and then typically about every six months, they switch, they rotate, will rotate districts.
And how many citations this year already?
It's a lot. We average about, I can tell you right now, because I just ran a report, we're sitting at fourteen hundred and ninety-three cases that we've taken this year. That's just cases. And each individual case could be dozens of violations of ordinance or International Property Maintenance Code. So to get you a specific number, I'd have to run some reports.
So almost fifteen hundred cases, and we're a little over halfway through the year.
Well, and this is, so I just do, you're correct, you're correct, it is calendar year.
Right, yes, calendar year.
I do calendar year.
So you could potentially be up there to close to three thousand?
Our average roughly is about twenty-five to twenty-seven hundred cases a year with my four officers, and that's, honestly, it's not enough. There's so many that we go by, there's so many, we're very reactive, and by reactive, I mean the citizens are calling us. We're not seeing, we're not able to get out and be proactive and go, hey, and just knock on the door and go, hey, yes, your weeds are, they're at four inches right now, but we're in monsoon season, next week they're gonna be six, you can go out there and take care of them. Or I would love nothing more than to be able to be proactive on dilapidation, and when I start seeing houses with paint peeling going, hey, if you just paint that a little bit, you're gonna save, you can spend a thousand dollars right now on paint, or you can spend thirty thousand dollars in ten years when all this is eaten away by our sun and the elements. So, but we're just so reactive because we don't have enough staff.
Right, okay.
Okay, and then one last thing before we move on to what we can do. So you provide, you have a list of about a hundred and twenty-ish dilapidated structures, is that what this list is?
About a hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty-four, if I remember correctly.
And so they are ranked, and just can you explain what, one through three is how they get ranked? One being not as bad, three being the worst. Can you go through that process?
So when I took over code enforcement in March of twenty twenty-three, going through all of my files, I had files of dilapidated structures that were identified under Stella, under James Baker, and there was no rhyme or reason to where these properties were on the list and why they were on the list, which ones I need to look at first, which ones aren't as bad, they were just identified. So I took the list and compiled and said, I'm gonna do a ranking system, so that way I can identify what's what. So I went through that list and I drove around to every property and I looked at it, said, okay, so your rank three is your most dilapidated structures. Those are typically structure fires. I say that because the majority of that is structure fires. When a structure fire happens, it's pretty devastating, so you're talking structural integrity and all sorts of bad things that come with a structure fire. So not only structure fire, but it could be things, there's a particular house that I'm about to have demolished, it's on the, in the next month, where the roof is caving in, how it is still, when I did my search warrant, I wasn't sure, or my inspection warrant, I wasn't sure how the roof was still on the roof. So it's very deteriorated, and that was a three. Your rank twos are those that aren't as bad as a rank three, but they need some attention as soon as I get through my threes. So your structure fires are gonna take precedence over, this one's peeling paint and some shingles missing and a few broken windows. Those are, I'm gonna deal with those as I can when I've dealt with my rank threes, my rank twos, and so it'll be a rank one, where it's, I'll get to it when I can get to it, I gotta deal with these ones first. And that way, if I leave the commission meeting tonight and I get hit by a bus, the next person in can take this, and they have a rhyme or reason of what I was doing. So, and that's the rank system. It was mainly meant for me to be able to go make sense of a list I got given.
We appreciate everything you and your guys are doing.
Thank you. If you have no other questions, I'll go back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So going back to what we do have, so we have, how many did we knock down? Nine? Josh, twelve? Nine? How many are in demo? So nine total. So we have those already on the list to demo, so once we demo them, that's when we have the cost, that's when we lean them, that's when we foreclose them. Sometimes it's weed abatement because, or trash abatement because we need to take care of the health hazard there. So once we go through this list and we determine that we're past the redemption period, and technically, we could do it during the redemption period. The only problem is the owner can go back and get that house from the person who purchased it, and if that person put money into it, then that person's out money, because they only have to satisfy the city's portion, not any improvements that the new owner has. So that's why it's safer to go past that one-year redemption period. So we get the list, we'll go through it, we'll bring it to commission. There's different ways of how we can handle this. By state statute, we do have to do it on the courthouse. But we can do it in several different ways. We can do it in lots and say, here's all, like I have a couple on Maryland, New York, that are all in the same area. Here's these six lots that are gonna be bid together, and we can do that for a developer, or somebody who's wanting to do that. That's one way to kinda help get away from, I'm just buying this lot because it's next to me and I wanna tear it down. If you want to do the process of actually rebuilding the infill, you can sell them in kinda like bid lots, but it does have to be on the courthouse step. Or you can choose to sell them individually. And that, we need to do something with these lists because it's already been, probably some of these are here for, been twenty twenty-two, yeah. We need to do something, because we have to maintain these, and so we just need to get rid of these, honestly.
So all these are sold by auction, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And cash purchase only? Okay.
So doing them in lots, you don't have to do it on the courthouse steps?
Yes, you'd still do, you just have to auction them in a lot. Like, all this group on Black Street, we're gonna sell this as one lot, and so you, one bid lot, I guess, is what you wanna call it, auction lot, I'm sorry. And they have to buy all of them, or you could sell individually, which we've typically done that individually. We haven't done an auction in quite a while. But we need to bring this forward. Once legal gets through the research of when it is okay to do some of these, we need to bring them forward.
How often do we do those auctions? It's not like
We have not done one, no. Oh, no. We should probably, well, we only started picking up on some, and knocking down dilapidated structures, like some of these, and then in twenty twenty-three, there was a real push to get some of these filed, as far, we were eating the cost and not recovering, we're still not gonna recover the cost, but we don't do them that often. Once we do this big, big push, like I said, it's gonna take a while, two years, three years, maybe, before we get a more, a bunch of them. What I can say is the city has the right to set the starting price. So the city can set it at zero dollars, we can set it at what it costs us to demolish, or somewhere in between. We cannot make a profit on it. So anything that goes over actually has to go back to the property owner.
Because the properties in District Five is like, you know, what is it, the flood zone? Would the city consider backfilling some of that land so people could afford it? Because I don't know how much it is to, you know, actually backfill, so they could actually build a house, because I know they did it for the two houses on the corner of Sixth and Florida. So would that be an incentive that could be done by the city, or is that strictly at the, the person who wants to purchase it, is that at their cost? Because I know that's one of the points that people have been talking about, the cost to build up the land in order to build.
So that's a tricky question that we're gonna have to dig into. When we own the lot, we can do whatever we want with it. So you could backfill it?
What would be difficult with what Sharon's asking is, she's talking about base flood elevation on those lots down there. Basically, if it's in a flood zone, AA or AH, if it's in an X, we're okay, but that's why they're having to build those up, because they're in an A or an AH. Each lot down there is gonna be different. So we would have to do a flood determination, we'd have to have a surveyor come in and give us a base flood elevation, and then the city would have to build it up to that point. But every single lot down there would be different.
We're about to lose our surveyor.
So that's actually gonna fall more on whoever purchases it or develops it, more than the city doing it. It would be very cost prohibitive for the city to do that.
Supply dirt?
Supply dirt, yeah, because there's a little more to it than just dump dirt in there. It's, you know, like the two you mentioned down there, where Habitat built those ones on Florida Avenue, and they built them up, you know, that's probably